Be rescued.
Rescue.
Politically, this city of the United States of America. The Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Good morning, everybody. I'll call a meeting to order. We have a forum. I will take a motion approved agenda in the minutes. And most seconds any for discussion on it. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Rich is not here. We have Arden's throne. With F A S T a speed trial request for airport road closure on Founder's Day. Kind of like we've done in the past.
Every year.
So. Yeah. Somebody want to make a motion that we approve that? No second. I have most in a second to approve those speed trials on Founder's Day. All those favors say aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Uh, drainage. We have some warrants and I think plain. Do you have in there?
I'll make a motion to approve the state boards and drainage claims.
I have most in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Did you get a hold of? I just talked. I just talked to him a few minutes ago. He said that everything is fine. It looked through. Double checked everything. We want to call him for an explanation. We can. Otherwise, he says it's good to go.
You don't want to call him? I don't know.
No. I. Well, no, I started his job.
He probably, he's villainous by the minute.
No, I pretty much understand it. So is what I'm saying.
No, well, yeah, he's close.
So is there a motion to, uh, well, first of all, we gotta decide which one we approve. The bids we want to. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Claims. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
Oh, second.
I have a motion a second and any further discussion on it? All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Do you have any reports? How about any, uh, salary changes or anything?
What do you got here?
Things.
Oh. Let's see. Diamond joke scene.
I'm looking for a cigarette license for Diamond Joe.
I have a motion a second to approve cigarette license for Diamond Joe Casino. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries.
You don't have to sign.
Oh.
Sorry. I wasn't a coincidence.
Now, uh, did you guys get a chance to look over that Fifth Amendment to the child support staffing contract between? D H H S and Child Support Services and Floyd County being our host for political subdivision. Is it? Yeah. Yeah. And all it basically did was change. They get, they went from D H S to D H H S.
Yep.
And then they had to redo like the salary as far as that kind of stuff and the name.
Yeah.
Is what it boiled down to. So are there emotions?
I'm motion to approve the, uh, contract between Health and Human Services, Child Support Services, Floyd County and ourselves.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. You gonna print my name for me? Do you want me to do that too? Now. We have a resolution.
Yeah.
This is. A resolution twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, which is amending the F Y twenty-three budget. She went through it all last week. I don't have to go through it again. Is there a motion to approve this resolution on the budget amendment? Is there a second?
I'll say it.
We have a motion, a second to approve the budget amendment. Is any further discussion? Roll call votes. Maybe? Stone?
Aye.
Lower. Aye. Resolution is duly adopted.
Now you can get a big one this year, this week.
What's?
Now you can get a big one this week.
There we go. Uh, board appointments. I did get, I called Tim O'Keefe on Tuesday morning about my card. And he said that he called his city clerk and he put it on the agenda. So he will.
I talked to another council member out there and asked him, you heard anything about this? And you'd be interested? So he's interested, but never going to discuss if he gets this.
And then I asked him about a meeting between Rafton, Manly, Kanset, Union, Lincoln, and half of Danville. And he said, no, he hadn't set anything up. He immediately set something up and called me Wednesday morning and said, the meeting is this Wednesday night at seven P M. At Manly City Hall. So we, let's hope everybody shows up. And. I think, did you put it on here?
No, the trustee's got a letter.
Okay. So. I guess so. Windworth, Becko, Melissa. Are you on?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Peace. Let's see.
Good grief, this last. Really?
Yeah. Isn't that weird?
Here, hold on. Let me try this. Can we hear you now?
I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. I have a revolving loan fund application to send out to A J today. So look for that in your email.
Okay.
And then I am finalizing the, um, postcard for the summer events. Um, it will be coming out way late. Uh, just because we were waiting on some information. So the first two events, um, that are listed won't be, it won't be in the papers in time. So just so that you're aware of that, um. But it should be in the paper before the Worth County Fair.
Cool.
But other than that, that's about all I have.
And were phone calls out there at the interchange? You heard anything?
I, um, no, but I do have a phone call with today with, um, I dig. So I'll follow up with them today.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else from those? Nope. Thank you, Melissa.
You bet.
Have a great day.
You too.
Uh, EMS continued discussion. I'll get you up to date with what I did this week. Um, well, first I talked to Tim. Got a meeting Wednesday night. And, uh, I did, then I got a call. From. Carl. EMS down in Mason City, G N A.
G N A.
And he's just wanted to give me a heads up. On the fact that they were putting together a letter. And it would be coming sometime in the first part of June. He had two questions. Who he needs to talk to? And I says, I'm gonna finish the idea because the county got it. And he says, we need to know who to bill. And I says, I wanna finish the idea because the county's out of it. So I'm bringing it up to you guys. And I did ask him some questions then. I asked him, they're gonna bill by the call. Starting July first. And the range is from five hundred to seven hundred. They don't know where they're at yet. But I did call him back. On Friday morning to ask him some other questions. And he said that. Eric was in a meeting with the Mason City City Council at that time trying to figure some of this out. They'd have more information on it. But yeah, they are gonna bill by the call as they come in. He was working with a deal with. The Northwood Ambulance Service on a mutual aid contract. And, uh. Good. That's how it works right now too. Um.
So do you want, you're not just the rest of the money?
Not yet.
Not yet. And the thing I'm worried about is, okay, so until they come out.
It's a good question.
Good question. That's what I'm sitting here asking. Not any ideas?
Cover.
Right.
So.
Might said.
But then there's no other way to pay for it.
You're right. Yeah, it's not, it wasn't in the, you know, we were looking at that before the budget. It wasn't in the budget. It was too late. There was no money in the budget. We found out we could use A R P money and that was a possibility down the road. Something we needed to talk about later.
There has to be some kind of itemization on your bills too. It just can't be broad rate. There's gotta be some reimbursement there somewhere. Insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, that kind of stuff. You know, just flat out give them an open checkbook. I don't think you can do that.
I agree with you. I did ask Carl about the fact of, I said, can you break it down by, I know you can't give us names or anything. But you could, could you break it down by addresses? And he says, no, I think HIP is gonna come in there. I said, can you break it down by townships? And he said, well, he said, your dispatcher could do that here, just like you did here. You've got a question, Dan.
On the billing, is that per transport or per call?
Hey, that's one thing I asked him. I said, are you going to bill every time you transport? Or are you gonna bill every time that you? Come into the county? He said he would like to bill every time they come into the county. He said, if we bill just by transport, it's gonna be a lot higher. It'll be at the top end of that. So.
Cause I know the helicopter, that's how billing helicopters.
Yep. And.
So what happens when a helicopter?
That's what I was just.
Well, I mean, cause we, I was first on board this and you come in.
Helicopter insurance.
Yeah. Who has helicopter?
Is it part of your medical?
Helicopter gets bid right to the, or the bill sent right to the person.
Right.
So it's a, it's an ambulance. So they send it to you and your insurance company. It's an ambulance. What your insurance covers, you know. I, you know, nobody knows, but.
And they're probably coming up short there too. So how do they bill that?
Well, I know, like I say, when I was first on board, this lady come here for us. Service to your request to basically do what they want to do with the M S R. Man, it was like twenty thousand dollars call or something across the county, but anyway, so. That ain't gonna happen.
Wasn't like thirty, forty thousand dollars one shot or something?
It was, it was, I was like a one time deal. It was, it was very steep.
See that, and that's Mercy's.
Yeah.
So.
Well, this was, she wasn't from Mercy at the time. She was like from a helicopter.
Yeah. Well, the helicopter is Mercy's and I think that's just part of their services is that they have a transport.
What they can get for, yeah, for billing.
Right.
And that may have, that may have had to change since those people.
Good, why she want them?
Well, and they, same thing, I think, is they. They build the insurance. They probably don't get paid everything that they bill for. If it's Medicare or Medicaid, they're, they're set. You know, so they're probably the same thing as where.
And that was one of the questions I asked Carl because on this twenty eighty agreement from two thousand and five. It says right in there, Mason City Ambulance Service will bill the individual or individuals. For the rest of the bill after Medicare, Medicaid, your private insurance. And I said, why haven't you been doing that? He said, well, he said, we have to sign agreements with Medicare. Federal government controls that. It says one of the agreements, if you want to do this Medicare, Medicaid, because you can't bill anybody for any extra that doesn't get paid right along with your private insurance plan. So that's where, and the insurance companies are controlling that. So that really, that, that is part of this problem.
So it's come back.
That's where it circled back around because if you, if you build the individual for everything that insurance didn't pay. We wouldn't be sitting here right now. I don't.
Then why do we have to pay a difference on a doctor?
Cause you've already got a plan that's got a.
But it's kind of part of your health plan too.
You mean, when you go to the doctor and you give them twenty bucks or thirty bucks or whatever it is, that's your, your co-pay. And it's set up that way when you buy the insurance.
Same way, but it's not.
On the.
I guess I've never, you know, I have my own health insurance and it's something.
That was one of the questions I asked him. I said, why haven't you been billing? So, and he said, it's because of federal government controls the Medicare and Medicaid. The insurance company's pretty dick, they pay policy to us.
That's why they're in the situation they're in. That's why they all are.
Yeah.
They're all struggling with their monies because they don't pay. The insurance, you know, they, they tell you what you're gonna get paid for your service. And that's, that's absolutely wrong. And any, any law.
That's a plus.
That's what we're stuck at. Your own legislation, your legislators, they're the ones that can change the. Medicaid, Medicare, you know, state and federal.
Right. But like I told him, I said, you know, when this thing got defeated in November. County was pretty much out of it. It was, I don't know where you send your bill and I don't know who you get a whole, I said, I don't have any problem with you calling me. I answer the phone. Yeah.
But if you guys decide, it would be logical to. To account. If you decided to use it, our view.
Well, yeah.
For the first year.
Yeah.
For sure. Yeah. But.
So that's the decision you gotta make before July one, so that it can be used.
Yep. Sometime between now and July, we're gonna have to have more than one discussion on this, cause, and then.
Then you gotta have publication time and everything. Then it kind of, there's a bill in July. It's gotta be.
So would the county sign it? I don't. Here's what I'm trying to, because really, if you get right down to it, if we're gonna pay them for every call they come into the southern part of the county. And we're, oh, and then I talked to Bill Jemsbold and I said to him, I said. You know, we got one flat rate of forty thousand dollars from you for those three and a half townships. I said, what do you think of billing per call? And he said, that's the way it should be done. That's what we want to do.
That's what Winnebago's.
That's what they wanted with, you know, they sent us a statement to up for you.
Yeah, but they got their taxation passed. They don't have any agreements.
No, they don't. They have. They're still in, they're still in big discussions over this. Because. In order to, yeah, I'll touch on that a little bit here.
That's awesome.
Uh. Anyway. You know, they would bill per call. So now if we're gonna pay the southern parts with A R P money per call. We pay this over here. We can't have North of doing it for nothing. They should get paid per call then too. And now I look at that whole scenario. And I look at it and even if it's not anywhere, you know, if they're, even if they're not the same rate, because that was like three hundred and fifty dollars a call. If this was somewhere between five and seven hundred, wherever north it comes in. If there's not enough A R P money, we don't, we're resigning no contract and then not have money, because now it's out of the budget and we're up a crack. You know.
We're gonna act.
Yeah.
And we, we could, so what's, uh, what we're gonna pay per call? We don't have to agree, you know. They couldn't already that back.
I got another thing to put this in perspective. We pay seven hundred and fifty-three dollars now for a deceased body to be taken from. Forever to the medical examiner's office.
That's at seven fifty-three.
That's up by the state.
Nothing. It's gonna happen.
Is that set by the state?
It just keeps going on.
I don't, I don't think that's right.
Well, you can buy a signature.
All right. You just stopped me. Just let you know I'm still alive.
Kind of wondered there for a while, Jeff.
Yeah. If, if the county signs, we take liability since we're paying some of the bills. Since he walked. That'd be my first question. The other question I heard. Is that they want to try to have my dispatchers make a decision over a poll on whether it's sent in and just or not. That's not what they do. We cannot.
Absolutely.
Know what's going.
Absolutely not.
Cause I've had that come up from some council members saying that.
Well, how can we sign a contract and then? For like a year? And then run out of money? Where's it coming? I'm gonna run it in six months. Yeah. So I'm against signing a contract with them.
We say we have this.
Did you hear the question you had?
I don't know.
Ambulance service of Mason City, if we sign a contract with them, we take on liability? Is that what your question was, right?
Yeah. If we sign a contract, we.
Service.
What's that?
Your question, Brock, yeah.
I don't.
We don't need any more of that, though.
If. The Mason City. Ambulance service screws up and someone dies or. Is worse off than they would have been if they hadn't screwed up. I think they certainly have liability and they should have a nice insurance policy that, that covers that liability. If you're. In some way underwriting and helping to pay. For that, I don't think that encourages any additional liability, but the easiest thing to do is to put in a. Subrogation. Was in the, uh, in the contract and make sure that they agree to indemnify. If someone ever does sue us. But, you know, the biggest thing is to. You know, you've got our. Liability insurance. I mean, it's. Is. If you haven't already figured it out. The worst thing about being sued. Is paying for the attorneys. It's, it's not any potential judgment. Against you. It's defending the thing that costs so much money. Um, and that's, you know, that would be the concern is I, I don't think. Anyone would be successful. We have, we have immunity. But you still have to defend it.
That's what I was just saying. It's a contract. We're hiring somebody else to do the work. They've got a, they're the ones that take the responsibility.
For the injuries or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Right. Just like now, and we don't have a contract for it. You know, that's a good question.
Which always like a deep pockets.
Oh, yeah.
And it doesn't take that much to file.
Where you might open up life, but the issues where you said they want you to make a call, make the determination of whether you said no.
That we're not. Your, your people have no expertise whatsoever to make you medical decisions. I mean, I generally speaking, even the, uh, even the E M Ts, you know, that are, that are on scene with the rescue squads, they won't. They won't make those determinations and bring the ambulance. And if someone wants to refuse to go on the ambulance, that's their choice, but.
Yeah. Paramedics get it better to look at it. And if they have questions, they call medical. Control and they talk to doctors and explain what they're seeing. And the doctor gives them direction, which way to go.
Well, but it's, it's all covered your ass.
Yeah.
So at the end of the day, they're gonna say, well, let's play it safe. I know that. We can't expect. Your department can't be doing that.
No.
Absolutely.
Just. That you can get dumped in your lap.
They take the information, they push. Proper buttons to set up the proper fire rescue ambulance, whatever it may be.
They respond or not, that's on them.
Give them the information out. So all they have to do.
Anyway, I did get a call from him. I guess it's something that we need to think about. It's something he needs to know who to talk to. He wants to know who to bill. We need to figure out whether we're gonna use A R P. That's something to talk to. I did talk to, uh. I talked to Thomas in Forest City a couple of weeks ago. And he was kinda, he's still. Doing the same thing he did before, but as far as the committee goes, it's out of the loop. You know, they had a bigger committee than they got down to a really small committee. So a lot of those, they've changed the committee a little bit. Um, I talked to, so then I called Bill, who's on the committee. And they are still. Doing the. Forest City, Buffalo Center, Lake Mills. And. They're doing E M Ts or paramedics, whatever they can afford. They're not necessarily setting paramedics in those places. You know, and he did mention to me like if Lake Mills goes on a call and goes out, they, they will move. The. Ambulance with the E M T or paramedic from there. He'll put it Thompson's sit till that thing comes back. So they're really digging into this quite a bit. They did look at, one of the things that. Forest City was under the impression of when they got voted on this. That their service wasn't gonna change one bit at all. And in order for it not to change, so they've got paramedics so they can afford them. He said, there's such a deal that Forest City's may still have to tax within the city to help the fund out because there's not enough money for all of this. And, uh. Which, you know, I was at that meeting last winter where, well, before the election, we were. The lady from Forest City said that their taxes inside the city limits, they thought would go down sixty-five cents per thousand. I remember mentioning that.
Yeah.
Well, now it's not gonna go down like that. So the. Yeah, you're right. Winnebago's really. They, they're, this is not easy. They're trying to figure this out.
It's got more issues than we do and they passed it.
Yeah, there. But, uh, and that's one of the things they're looking at then. These E M Ts or paramedics that are sitting. In Buffalo Center, Lake Mills. Are that, they're going from nine A M. To six P M. I'm not sure about those hours. My attitude would be if you stuck. You know, an E M T or paramedic someplace, you should go from like seven to. Seven thirty to five thirty. So people know so they can go to work. But it takes some of the weight off of it. Um, other than that. He mentioned to me. That I asked him, I said, now, you know, this thing passed in November, but you haven't taxed for it yet. You have no money. Come July first, when it goes into effect. And he said, right now they have extra in their TIF funds, so they're gonna borrow from TIF windmills. And then pay it back. And I went, okay.
Can you do this?
I'm not sure.
You're, you're, I'm kinda like, that's the, that's the new one.
As far as.
That's, cause I asked, I, I wanted to know how they were paying, you know, it's like, even if we do something, it takes a while to generate them taxes. You're eighteen months behind, so. They were gonna. Juggle funds, but.
Yeah, you can do it. You know, we've done it in our, in our fund loans, but. And pay it back, but.
But that's how they're working.
Yeah. They must have looked into it. Cause it's.
So.
Well, they might have suggested, I don't know what. Right. It's kind of how it usually works.
But yeah, I've been. Picking brains.
Well, I mean, that very, that would really be.
Well, you gotta come up with the money. You've got to get from point A to point B. Till the taxes start rolling in.
Well, even that, yes. You're still, even if. Said even if you pass it, you're still looking at. For that money, you're really rolling in. So we do a lot of things in the rear or something.
You know, and even if we decide to pay. A R P money on these funds. So I, I think basically right now we should hang tight with our A R P. And I did look that up too.
But you're running out of time on that too. Just have, that's another discussion with the one year old or the water. If that's gonna be able to be done by the deadline. Of the project being.
Well, I looked up, uh.
Guys, enjoy your day.
Yeah.
We have to have projects. The projects have to be decided on by December thirty first to twenty-four, and they have to be finished by December thirty first to twenty-six. Is what I went back and looked at. Is, does everyone remember, you remember that, Jack? Is that the right date? And so. I know I wrote it down here someplace, but.
That's what we were talking.
Yeah, we were talking about that. And then, of course, it doesn't help when Marco Rubio comes out last week and we got a budget problem in the federal government and he goes, well, let's start going back this money. I don't know how they can do that.
That's why.
That's why.
I've talked to other supervisors and they want to make sure they're gonna start properly like checks. And the, the places they're gonna go, that they're sending money to that entity, you put it here. It's. It's going towards this Friday later. We're gonna watch and make sure it goes towards this project, but it's out of our control, so they can pay it.
Then what do we do then? What's that?
We have no recourse. If it's like a construction project and goes out, you, you're out of luck.
Well, this is what you get.
So how do you tie that into ambulance service? You know, I mentioned originally to the townships, but then that could vary. You may have no calls in one township and the next township's just loaded with them.
They're all different. The communities are gonna take the bulk of it.
No, he's gonna lock townships. Balances in their mind.
Right. Amen. I agree totally. Right, amen, I agree totally.
Gee, I wonder why.
Anyway, I've been on the phone.
No.
But yeah, I hopefully this meeting Wednesday night, we can get some. You know.
Maybe get some more.
Get drafting. Engage here. So. Cause it's been a while since they've had a rescue squad right then.
Oh, yeah. Well, not forever, but.
Three years, three or four years, well, gotta be longer than that, we're pushing far.
Well, cause you guys were covering, I mean, for graphing themselves, they've been down for probably about. Eight, nine.
Yeah, cause we did it for almost three, I think. So yeah, that's probably right, yeah.
I have one question, and I should know this. Bob Rush is the Worth County EMS director. What does that entail? What does he do?
He's basically, they just, he's. Overseas the, all of the first responder units in the county. That are part of that. They meet quarterly, I think. Um. It's it's one of those things, it's like a medical member, you have to have it, you know, you provide EMS, you have to have the EMS, you know, so, yeah, maybe quarterly.
Why doesn't the training money get used anymore?
I think it has been.
No.
Doesn't it?
Not through me.
So I know last time, I think, I think they bought last time, they want all CPR stuff, because he actually, he trains most of the departments in CPR. Um. And they have all the, and his. The dolls that, I think that was one of the last ones, but I. Yeah.
When the. Before pandemic, we were setting up EMT and first responder classes.
Maybe that's why. Pandemic slowed it down for ten, right, one minute, maybe back on it, but it's there.
And he, he's one of, works with Dr. Touche on making sure that's all put together and everybody stays on the same. Everyone's on the same level grounds, so we're all, they're all training, including us, you know, law enforcement and nine, or nine-one-one, go to those meetings.
Is that you?
And we've incorporated it from, we used to have fire chiefs meeting and the EMS, now we've incorporated that into one entity, so we don't have double meetings.
It used to be grant money in and grant money out, and it hasn't been so long.
Got you.
Yeah.
Well, we, pandemic put a big slow on that, then, yeah. But they're also, I mean, that's like. Helping file out with the state, um, with Mira Lee's and that, um, it's good, when we have those meetings, Bob helps working with like Joyce, that they're not getting their. Their stuff put in for the state and tries to work with them. And like me, he was very instrumental.
Just overseas and keeps everybody, tries to keep her at the same.
Yeah.
Level, cause like now we have the same medical director in the entire county. Which is fantastic, because anybody, any of the services can work together and not have issues. Um, but. You know, yeah, kinda oversees all that.
When I've had issues like hurdle responding to medical calls, I I called him and he goes in and said, you can't do, this is what you can do, your certification. This is how you get your cert, he works with that.
Yeah.
Last year was spouse, was nineteen.
Oh, it's kind of a pandemic situation.
Or maybe they're not getting grants. Cause it was never county money, it's.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got on EMS, you guys got any questions? Other than this meeting Wednesday night, were you aware of it?
I found out, yes. Today, what's today? Saturday afternoon.
Good. And Tim did say like that also, so there's. Yep. Uh, next, we have. Chris isn't here. Uh, you get a hold of Jason?
I did talk to Jason, yeah, uh, I told him, we gotta get the stuff done, I mean.
Like, great, figured out, pipe is the price, whatever, I can see waiting, but now it's time to go. What's that?
Race.
Yeah.
Yeah, wash, yes, I told him, we need, we need to get that done, I said, get this thing bit out, it's not gonna change that fast. We gotta get this stuff done, so.
We gotta get it. Yeah. We gotta get it done. And we gotta get, yeah, we gotta get them rates fixed.
So I'll follow him again. And uh, just keep coming in.
Yep.
I blame it on you guys. Cause I got a new supervisor jumping down my throat, where are we on this? So.
Yeah. Oh, a long time. Yeah, we're getting close to fifty thousand. So, department head discussions. Dan, anything?
Um, I got the official letter from OSHA that we were in no violations over there, so that is closed complete one hundred percent. The remodel has started over there, so I'm hoping if it goes good, maybe able to go back in there. Sometime in August. So. But yeah, so things are moving forward with that. So.
And the safety seems to be working. Cause the. Rates are going down.
Yeah.
Safety committee.
They'd be the worker, and apparently maybe paying a little more attention.
Well, I'm lucky we haven't had any more breakouts.
Yes.
Need it.
No.
Anybody else? Got a question out there? The department head? Uh, supervisors weekly. I didn't have anything else besides that, other than. I talked, Julie Devine talked to me here a couple of weeks ago, she sent me an email about Cigna. She'd like to talk to our employees. And I don't like to, we pretty much got that set up, it's going. I just want the okay from you guys for me to. Call her back and say. It's a waste of your time.
We have ISO, that's all we need.
We do.
And I'm the type. You know, you could come here and give us your spiel, but. If it ain't going anyplace, I'm wasting your time.
Yeah.
No, we don't even watch.
Okay. Well, I wanted to make sure it wasn't just me deciding.
No, we both.
Okay. That's uh. Other than that. I did, oh.
I got a comment in the, in the thing here, it says, uh, W W B.
We're not doing anything else than I said.
That I highly recommend Cigna, it does not have to come.
Well, she can talk to anybody on her own, on their own time, it it doesn't have to be on county time.
Sure. Um. I got ahold of Brian Nelson, he's got plenty of hay, I called John Jules, that he has plenty of hay. Didn't you guys mention something about Larry Hovey might be interested or is he?
And for pay.
Oh, well, then in that case.
I don't.
They don't wanna bail it.
Stevens would be impressed.
I never thought about him.
I mean, I don't know where he's at.
Jackie mentioned to me that. Jay or uh. Jim was willing to do it. But he just wants to let, he wants us to let him know while I'm in banks.
If they're gonna do it, probably starting in, once in May, and then maybe in July, and then like, then it would probably be pretty well.
We can't.
He can't even give it away.
Right, anybody in the neighborhood that wants to.
Well, the problem John Jules has said is there's sweet clover in there.
Yes.
That stuff gets brittle.
It doesn't dry well.
And it, and it's. I've dealt with that stuff before, and it's basically just got one.
So nobody's probably gonna.
Well, they'd have to go to really.
You guys travel, it's way down. It's big, it's big, it's just. So do we wanna? Keep looking for somebody or just go with Jim? That conversation.
I, I honestly, I guess right now, we keep looking, but let's have, if those guys have time, let's give them four now.
The first round?
Yeah, the first round, get it knocked out. Before it gets to be a pain, if those guys have time, then they can do it, that doesn't take two days, or they can get it done quicker.
Do you wanna talk to him about that?
I am right.
Send him a message right now.
And then if we could, if there's somebody around or we keep looking in that neighborhood that wants to pay, that they'd be cut from.
Paying a thousand, I mean.
Jimmy, you.
Name the two that have.
That worked for the city?
Yeah, I know.
Cause he does the wastewater nap for the city, but does the bailing.
I'm going out there today, this meeting, I'm gonna talk to him.
Well, get it on the list and we're gonna.
I'll tell you what, have you sent it yet?
Not yet.
I'll talk to Jim right now this morning, and I'll send you a text.
But he's got cattle too, so wouldn't he have the same issue?
Not necessarily.
So. I'll ask Jim and then I'll get ahold of you. What was that question?
June seventh, uh, Jim Moody will be, uh, in all the facilities doing safety walkthrough.
Okay, good.
So that's from Mark.
The only other thing I gotta do is after this meeting, go out with the snow. Cause you had mentioned something about. Considering it was raining, that they might have to do a little grinding, have you looked at it?
And I, and I checked, I talked to Paul Thurling last week, he said it's probably not that big of a deal, because they'll, they'll. Stop it, they'll end up growing old in any way.
Yep.
But um. There's less pools, or there's less spots out there, which kind of surprised me, but that's what they agreed to, so.
What was it, sixteen of them, or fourteen?
No, there's one.
Forty. Forty, okay.
Well, that was what we talked about earlier.
I thought it was like.
I was talking to pieces of P U C.
Even seventy. But yeah, they, they're spread out. So it's not gonna look the same.
Yeah, it's pretty much. Where did the extra forty-five feet come? You know, I okayed these three back here, but that wasn't forty-five.
I have no idea, it's whatever you did.
What is it? That would be more. Public health is different, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was already.
Done, the only thing they had to do there was fix the crack in the corner, that's not on this bill.
And then. Cement cost more, I guess.
I saw that increase on there.
So, but the first number was the, the.
It's the bid.
And the rest of it.
How much cement did they lay coming out your door? You know, the first section was.
That was a little bit out further.
Well, the first, the first section was okay, and then it was, there was a safety hazard there, so I had him replace that next one, and then the one way down the end was cracked.
And then.
And then one right out the door, but that's, that's not forty-five feet.
You're talking out on the sidewalk.
Well, was that part of the bid? I thought that was originally part of the bid out here.
I think so. That was using square foot, huge bit of it.
It's a square foot.
Forty-five square.
Was that what you were? I didn't, I read it as forty-five.
It'd be three feet wide, fifteen feet long.
Yeah. He's been by square. On to you, AJ.
All right.
I think I.
Uh, I just had a. A uh, impact grant committee meeting with uh. Care protections. We are working on spending our fund balance down. Uh, so that state doesn't withhold any payments to us, uh, we went through and. You remarked, it's about seven hundred thousand dollars of stuff. We've got about three hundred left to get through this process, so. Give away about a million dollars to providers. Entities, services, where we can, where we can increase services, get stuff going. Keep within our scope of the, the state. Guidelines as far as services, so. Uh, it's been really good, we've seen a lot of good impact from it, so. Went through that uh, Thursday and. So I had.
Really, I nothing, I can email, I guess, our workforce development statewide, we're down to two point seven percent of one point, which is pretty much zero. So that's gonna be out, but we need people to, still need people to fill that.
Okay. Uh, next week's agenda items. Everything with you guys.
Remember not to come on Monday.
Tuesday.
That's right, more of these, right?
I would not say that.